So my name's Tom Kurler and I'm really glad to be here. And I'll pass the mic to our other fellow colleagues here.
I'm Greg Belial, also a member of the school board, primarily southeast, but of course, we represent the whole district.
Hi, I'm Pam Knowles, representing Grant and Madison neighborhoods, but as Greg said, the whole city too, so happy to be here tonight.
We're gonna stop at seven thirty.
I have a question. I'm one of the parents from Glenco Elementary, and as you probably know, we are in the midst of a five principal cycle over a twelve-month period. Am I not loud enough? Because I could get louder. Anyway, as a parent, one of the very concerned parents at Glenco, we'd like to get some solid promises that we're going to have a permanent principal solution. Antonio Lopez and Shay James came and gave us all kinds of lovely promises, and that's all great and good, but I've got a kid who's already had three principals, and he's in first grade, and he's going to have two more before he makes it to first. So I'd like to know what the process is. Is that just, am I gonna see this again if suddenly Mr. Lopez sees that there's a problem? He's gonna take my great principal and put them somewhere else? I don't know what the, I couldn't get a straight answer on what the decision-making process is for that. I mean, was there even an opportunity for them to make that decision in August to rearrange the principals before it impacted our students? I don't know, is there some language in the contract with the teachers' union that says that can't be done? I'd like an explanation.
So I, I'm sorry, when I was messing around with microphones, I missed, what school is it?
Glenco Elementary.
Okay, Glenco. So I'll give you what I understand about the process, and then we'll have staff follow-up. So obviously with personnel, there are lots of life changes that happen, so sometimes they're anticipate, we're able to anticipate them and sometimes we're not. And I don't know specifically what the situation was at Glenco. I know that, again, we moved to another, there was a leave, right, and then we moved a principal in, replaced another principal. Leaves are really hard because sometimes their health, sometimes their family, sometimes their number of different things. As far as the process going on, I know that my, we work every summer, there's this, I want to say it's kind of this shuffle. People are looking for different schools, looking for their own growth, looking for a better fit. And so in an instant, in an organization this big with eighty-five schools, people begin to move, and that creates a shuffle effect. There is a process that we go through, so somebody from district office usually comes out and talks with the community and finds out what are the values. Because what we find is that if we can find a match with the values, it's tough to talk about person, people, because people get set that I want this person or I don't want that person, when in fact, it might be a good fit or it might not be. And so there's usually that process. If something happens like a leave, there is rarely time, we need an academic leader at that site, and so it becomes more of a who do we have that can fit that temporary? So I know we have an interim principal right now up at Beach. We have an interim principal, there was just another one that was announced due to a, Scott. Again, due to, due to unforeseen circumstance. So that being said, we also try to create some stability, so there are lots of schools that have had principals for a while. It's, it's one of the challenges, but the process is normally staff come out, listen to the values, and then in the contract, you mentioned that a contract, and all, all of our principals are technically Atwell employees, but state law dictates that they're allowed due process if we're gonna let them go, so they have two years before they can actually be let go if they're not performing the way we need to. So there isn't a contract per se as saying you have to stay until the end of the school year, or we prefer you, or you need, you can only leave your school at winter break, for example. But we try to minimize that. So staff come out, usually listen to community input about what it is, people are looking for, and then we try to find the match, and then it becomes an HR process usually. And I've heard in the past, we've had times when the community has been involved in the selection, when the community's sat on there, but even during those times, my understanding is people oftentimes came away and they were said, you know, when we get in there, they make it very clear that it's Superintendent Smith's decision at the end. And that rubs some people the wrong way, they say, why don't we get to decide? Of course Superintendent Smith is the one we all hold accountable for whether or not we're moving or making progress. And some people are really okay with that, they understand that they're just giving input. But again, on these, on these cases where it seems like there was a short, short amount of time to be able to make a decision, staff try to find somebody that's qualified, that's capable to step in until we can have that longer process.
And I understand that, and I'm not arguing with the, that at all, and they did go through the community process to select our principal, Sam Regations. It was when they decided eight weeks into the school year that they needed to move her to John James and bring their principal to us. And my concern is, Mr. Lopez stood in front of us and told us it was his decision, and that's fine, he's allowed to make those decisions. But my argument is, why didn't he take that resource in August and put her in John James at that moment and switch the principals then? Honestly, most of the parents of Glenco probably would have been just as satisfied. But now, because they waited until eight weeks into the school year, we have a principal switch, and then of course she had to go on leave, which is fine, I understand, that happens, I work, we do that at my office too. But, so then, of course, now we've got three principals this school year, and so it just seems like, because Glenco is a great, stable, fantastic school, that we get the short end of the stick. And I mean, all personalities left aside, because there were lots of people who did not like Ms. Regations, and that's fine, it's just a matter of, you knew that school was in trouble in August, why did you wait until October to make that decision? That, that's where I'm uncomfortable, and again, I don't feel like I've gotten a real answer to my question, and I think most of the parents who feel either way about the principal that we, we got rid of, is, are gonna want that same answer. Because our question is, what me, what happens if we find a great principal next year, and guess what, halfway through the school year, there's another failing school that needs that body? I mean, we honestly have a lot of very angry parents at my school, and it's not a fun conversation to have. And I like Mr. Blank, he's a great guy, and I haven't met the new principal, I'm sure she's gonna be great, but I've got a bunch of teachers that have to deal with the fact that they're now on their, you know, fourth principal in a matter of months. If I had four bosses in a matter of months, I'd be looking for employment elsewhere. I, I would not stick around for an organization that was that, that crazy. And so, you know, it's not just a matter about what principal is there, it's what is it gonna do to the staff, the people that make our school run every day? It just, again, I get a lot of this like, well, we're doing the best we can kind of stuff, and I feel like, not really. And then what are my options? Can I, I can't vote Mr. Lopez out of his job, what, what can I do? Any suggestions?
Well, I mean, from my perspective, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, and since advocating and continuing to ask questions, from my perspective, and while I'm giving you an explanation now, know that staff are taking notes and will follow up on this, so don't, don't think that I'm trying to explain away something. At, that being said, I don't know if you've been a supervisor or not, but when I was supervising, one of the biggest challenges is effectively supporting folks, and one of the challenges is, as a supervisor, you know things about that individual that you can't, one, decide for them sometimes, two, you also can't share with folks, and so I don't know if that's an HR thing going on. I think, I am confident that staff would prefer to start the school year with a principal, and to continue with that principal through the end of the school year. So I appreciate what you're saying, and it is a challenge for staff who have to go, undergo that switch, students who have to undergo that switch, I hear the frustration.
Principals who have to undergo that switch? It's tough, nobody wants to.
Hi, I am a Franklin parent and Mount Tabor Middle School, and the PIL athletic director, Marshall Haskins, has done a great job the last year of rebuilding the athletics programs, and thanks to the board for putting some money back into sports. And Marshall, on his own, as I understand it, has started some middle school feeder programs, especially with sports that were lacking in younger kids having any sort of access to good sports programs, so that they were ready to play in high school. But across the middle schools, it's been extremely uneven, there's been very haphazard communication, but my big question for you is, will the board be funding that going forward? Because my understanding is, he's having to pull it together by fundraising, and it just seems like a pretty critical piece of the picture for success in school.
So I'll start, but then I gotta get rid of this microphone, not because I don't want to answer, but because I don't want to hog it, so that all you hear about is the Greg Belial Show. First of all, Mr. Haskins is doing a fantastic job, we're excited to reinvest in the PIL. As you all know, we have been cutting sports for a long time, primarily to, to hold sacred as much as we can in the classroom, so it was exciting to get to reinvest in sports. Mr. Haskins received a reinvestment from the board, not only to do high school, but also to do middle school. It's not probably as much as he would like, because it's a beginning, and there were three tiers when he talked to us about the board, there was gonna be some partner sports, some sports that kind of run through us, but kind of not, and then the sports that we do. So I'm interested in reinvesting, but it'll, it's hard to know in isolation compared to what other choices we're gonna be given this year to make. But I support it, I'm very excited to support it, I would love to see middle and high school sports grow.
I can take the mic for a little while, but I would also, I don't really have anything more to say, other than I also support middle school sports and, and our high school sports, and will continue to support those as a board, I hope. We are about to enter the budgeting process, and so those of you who are advocates for middle school sports, or for whatever other kind of expenditure you're an advocate for, there'll be plenty of opportunities for you guys to come up and talk to the board, and please feel free to come to the board meetings and provide citizen comment for us about the programs that you think are the most important, or that you want to make sure are funded in the next budget cycle.
My name's Jessica Lindley, I'm fortunate enough to be part of Portland Council PTA, and I have three kids in three separate Portland public schools, great, great school district. My question, one of the schools that my children attend is Creston, which is a K-8, and I wanted to know what your guys' plan is to match what you, what we consider traditional sixth to eighth grade middle school with those electives to some of our K-8 schools where, though that's a fantastic program and we like having a K-8, but bringing in electives to make sure that our kids are prepared for high school when they transfer?
Hi, everybody, I'm Bobby Regan, and I'm on the school board. I apologize, it took me like an hour and fifteen minutes from my house to get here, so sorry about that. You know, I think that the middle school K-8 question is one that we're going to be discussing in the next year or so, especially as we go through the boundary review process. Portland State University was helping us with that process, told us that we clearly need to have more discussion around that. In terms of the electives, I think that we all want to make sure that our middle-level kids get the opportunity to take quality electives, and I think that's been a real challenge for us at the K-8s because of the funding situation that we've had over the last couple of years. But we're all super aware of the need to pick up on that area. You know, if you're asking a little bit about where we might head with middle schools versus K-8s, I'm a big believer that what really matters is the quality of the teacher in the classroom, and the quality of leadership in the building, and if you look at any of our private schools in Portland, they're K-8s. So there's nothing wrong with the K-8 model, it's a perfectly fine model. The problem that we've had is making sure that we have enough kids in each grade, six, seven, eight, at the K-8 level, for us to really be able to offer the robust program that they deserve. So, you know, I think that's, that's, it's definitely on our horizon, on our, we're well aware of the issue.
No, that's really good, we're loving the K-8 program at Creston, it's a great community feel, and we don't want to lose that, that's great. But thank you, that answers my question.
And that is the thing, I mean, the middle school has some wonderful offerings, but the K-8, what the K-8 offers you is an opportunity for parent engagement all the way through, because typically when you're in a K-5 and then you move to a middle school, the parents kind of start separating a little bit from their kids at that point, and the kids kind of expect the parents to separate when you're in a K-8, you don't have that same situation. So it offers a lot of stability, there's less transitions for kids, the teachers know the kids even better, so there's a lot of value in the K-8 programs, there's also huge value in the middle school program, and, you know, having an opportunity for, for all of the teachers and all the staff to be sort of the experts on that age student. So, I mean, both of them offer really great value. The biggest challenge that we've had is that we just haven't been able to get the same level of electives. One thing that you should also know just for fun, the state legislature has mandated that by 2017, every middle school kid will take, I think it's either fifty-five or sixty minutes of PE. And so in terms of electives for all of our middle-level kids, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, you're basic, that will be one of your electives, and so you're basically gonna have an option probably to take one other elective. You know, if you are a parent like me, and you said to your kids you will take a foreign language, they would take for three years PE and foreign language. So at some level, people say, oh yay, our kids are gonna get mandated to have PE, that's great, we have an obesity problem and the rest. At the other level, if you are basically saying that will be one of your electives, then the opportunity for our middle school kids to take other electives is gonna be incredibly limited very soon.
I just want to point out that in a K-8 model, when you mandate that the middle schoolers will have additional PE time, you now take that PE teacher out of rotation for the K through five kids. So that's something that we need to look at as well, is that we need to make sure that all the children are being served at the K-8.
In addition to that, I'd just like to point out, and Creston's a good example, right, our facilities, many of our neighborhood schools are not big schools, and so even if we, for example, add another halftime PE teacher, which would be an unfunded mandate from the state unless they come through and fund it, just the space inside, indoors, in a small gym or a gym, in many of our facilities, there's gonna be a challenge.
So I was actually at a school today that's a K-8, and they have a small gym, and one of the things the principal pointed out to me was, when, when, when PE is mandated, they don't know what they're gonna do with the students, they don't know where they're gonna put them, how they're gonna do PE that much. And then another thing that I would just mention about K-8s, totally agree with everything that Bobby and Greg have said, but the other thing that we need to start considering as a district is the size of our schools and whether we can actually have enough students in those classrooms, even if they wanted to come, because it really is how many students, and some of our schools are just so small that they couldn't hold any more students, and so we'll never get to the number of students that we need in order to provide the kinds of electives that we want. And then also, just to follow along with, you know, if you've got, if you've got PE mandated, and you're a parent who wants Spanish, well then there's also music, art, some other great kinds of, yeah, some other great kinds of electives, but in actuality, your student can only take one. So how many electives do we actually have to, or need to offer within a K-8, or in order to serve, serve those children? So it's another, just, another thought. Never easy, always complicated, so, yeah.
Hi, I'm Greg Burl, I'm a substitute, nine and a half years experience with Portland Public Schools, and I'm thrilled that you're actually gonna be able to answer me, I often testify, but I don't get an answer. First of all, I want to thank you for everything that you're doing in terms of equity, and I'm here to share some places where things aren't going as well as we might have hoped. I think, I'll, so far, I don't know, I think I've subbed about forty days, forty-five days this year, if there's been that many, and, thank you, sub shortage. I'm just gonna, I've been to a lot of schools, and I had the good fortune to sub a couple of weeks ago at Access Academy, right? For those of you who don't know, Access is designed for talented and gifted students who are a behavior problem in their home school. And unfortunately, we were snowed out last Thursday, I was gonna go a second time and check to make sure, because I was a third-grade teacher, and there were no African-American students in my class, and I don't remember seeing a single African-American student in the K-8. The following week, I went to one of our fantastic middle schools, and I had the good fortune to teach an African-American kid, he was brilliant, he was asking me about astrophysics and stuff, and he was complaining that he was having trouble making friends and getting along, and teachers were warning me about him as a discipline problem, and so I just want to point out that you have this great program for people who are a discipline problem, because they're brilliant, and I didn't see any African-American kids, and then I saw an African-American kid who was a discipline problem and was brilliant at the next school. So could you just comment, what are, I know you must be thinking about stuff like that, what are you gonna do?
We'll be happy to comment. First of all, I want to be clear that Access is not a school for children with, who are discipline problems, it's a school for children who are talented and gifted, exceptional students. Yeah, usually within the top one percent, so just want to be clear about that, and because we may even have some Access parents here, but I've been to Access several times, and am scheduled to go again in a couple of weeks, and it's a really wonderful school for our students. And then, I, I guess I'm not quite clear what the other issue is, we want to make sure that Access is as available for every student as we possibly can, our, either special ed, or our talented and gifted teachers, or our people, our other counselors in schools are aware of the Access program, but I will tell you that there's an incredibly long waiting list for Access, and Access has had a little bit of difficulty with finding a permanent home, right now they're at Rose City, not too long ago they were at Saban. So our goal as a district is to find a permanent home for Access, and then to allow that program to grow so that we're able to serve all of the students.
So I'm gonna say, thank you for the question. One, don't confuse Eric Burl with, or excuse me, Greg Burl with Greg Belial. I know we sometimes have some similarities. And I also want to point out that our superintendent, Superintendent Carol Smith has joined us, so she's also here to, to hear your questions and to hear our responses. But what I heard in your question primarily is, is an issue we've identified, in the sense that students of color are not identified for talented and gifted at the frequency that our white students are. So in talented and gifted, students of color are underrepresented, and unfortunately, and inexcusably, in special ed, they are overrepresented, so more, a higher percentage than we do for our students. So this is why we actually elevate our work with the racial equity work, is because we, this is a problem, we know that that, just statistically, that can't be true, that all the white kids somehow are geniuses, and all the kids of color belong in special ed or a majority, or however, however we call it. So it, it puts an urgency to the work, and is part of why I'm committed to it. Now, to pretend that it's simple about what's, what's traditionally been used as a screening tool for somebody as, as talented and gifted, what's traditionally used as, as indicators for somebody's need in special ed, it takes some time to think about and to be intentional about, and oftentimes educators sometimes disagree about what the, what the opinion is. But that's the work we've been doing, and I know that, for example, Pacific Educational Group, PEG, has been working with especially our special ed team and ELL team to make sure what are the implicit biases in the tools we're using, and what is it, and that, how we're framing and looking at kids that results in an overrepresented kids of color in special ed and underrepresented in talented and gifted.
Hi, I'm a parent of kids that aren't yet in school yet, but we're slated to go to Creston, and I was curious to hear a little bit more about your redistricting process for the elementary schools. In my neighborhood, we don't have very high, we're Creston, I don't know if I said, but we don't have a high capture rate, and I guess we have, there are a bunch of, a bunch of my neighbors have little kids too, and we're kind of waiting to see, okay, Creston doesn't really feel like any of our neighborhood school, it's, there are three schools closer to us, and we're waiting to see what, you know, what that looks like, so I'd hope to hear kind of how that's gonna look, or the process at least.
First of all, thank you for being here. When I moved to Portland, my kids were one and four, and we moved here to come to Portland Public Schools specifically, so I'm excited that you're here. In terms of the boundary work that we're doing, I think we have about fifty percent of our schools are overcrowded, and about fifty percent of our schools are under-enrolled, so we know that we have to make some adjustments. And so we're basically going, going through a year-long process of talking with our community and doing some, two really, really extensive surveys on values that Portlanders hold as we make these decisions. We're also working with the City of Portland, Portland Plan, the rest, just to understand, you know, what our top-line goals will be in terms of boundary changes. But we do expect that we will end up doing boundary changes. We in the past have sort of done boundary changes on a school-by-school basis, and we're trying to be a little bit more holistic in our approach this time, because we know that when you make a boundary change in one school, it often affects the neighboring schools, and our school boundaries between, you know, Madison High School, Franklin High School, and the rest are, they're, you know, they're all, they intersect all over the place. So we know that we have to take a more holistic approach. We, we won't have any answers for you for a little while on this, but I'm glad you're paying attention.
Yeah, and I'll just say, one thing in relation to that is, is that as part of this process, we are gonna have school, Bobby mentioned the school surveys, and just a, it's gonna be the beginning of instituting in-depth conversations with parents, students, teachers, and administrators in each school. And we have very high goals in terms of participation to help inform that, and hopefully that will institutionalize a lot better communication and make the process work better than other processes have worked in the past.
I'm just gonna add on a little bit to it, that, because what I heard at the end is, it doesn't feel like your neighborhood school, because there are other schools that are closer. And if you look at a map of Portland Public Schools and where boundaries are, people have known for a long time that the boundaries have not made sense, and it's part of their history of how they came to be. Some of the lines are still very much part of exclusionary zoning practices, and we don't want those kids here, we don't want these families there, we want these families over here. And so when Bobby talks about looking at it holistically, that being said, because we're so lucky to have so many neighborhood schools, the line will have to be drawn somewhere, and what we're hoping is to figure out from a community what feels the most natural. Some, some families say, I'm totally fine crossing Holgate, for example, some families would say, I would never ask my five-year-old to cross Holgate. So what feels different to different community members is what we're gonna try to get with that and do our best, but I know that when I first joined the board, people were complaining that the, the boundary ran right down the middle of the street. They thought it should run down the, the backyards of people, or the alleys, or the, and it's just always one of those things that, no matter where you draw the boundary, I'm not sure it makes sense. My, the house that we first moved into as a family, ours, ours was our neighborhood school, and the, right across the street was the other school, right? And then if I went down two blocks, it was another school, so we were right in this corner. So I just want to acknowledge that whatever this looks like, what this process looks like, it's gonna be a year long, we're hoping to engage as many people as we can, so that we can get it all to make as much sense as possible.
So how old are your student, or your children?
One and three.
One and three, so it's gonna take a little while. I bet you're with a, a group of other parents with similar age group? Great. Well, my advice to you would be to continue to be involved, and to go to the principals in those schools and, and talk to them, but see if you can, John, are we actually going out to younger parents with, that have students who are not yet in school with that survey? Okay, so there we go. Will, will you hand him that mic? There you go.
Great question. So there'll be two surveys next year, the
The first in January and February will be a school climate survey. And that will not be, that'll be for families, students and staff who are currently in the schools to give feedback on their experience. For the values and growth management survey that will be driving district-wide boundary review, yes, not only families who will have kids in school, but also all community members because that's part of it. So thank you for.
So you know that's coming up, so pay attention to that. Okay?
I'm the PK president at Creston. And I'm the PK president of Broken Cove. I'd love to talk to you. I hear you all kind of great information.
Betsy?
I wanted to build off the question. I attended the District Wide Boundary Review Committee meeting and, you know, really great people working on that. But I got the impression that the Franklin cluster and the Madison cluster aren't represented on that committee. And I'm wondering if some considerations be made to add someone to represent Southeast.
So I'm on the, I'm on that committee and I'll definitely take a look at it. It's not full yet. We haven't, everybody has not been appointed. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
So we try and get around to everybody who hasn't talked before we let people have another turn.
I'm a Franklin teacher and I teach English language development here. And both Director Regan and Director Knowles, you've mentioned some schools are overcrowded and some are not full to capacity, obviously. So we've been hearing more and more about, for this particular site, in the transition over to the Marshall site, that we will be sharing classrooms. And I wondered, as we continue to hear about it, more and more, I'm getting the impression that that is an instructional model, if you will, for high schools that are being rebuilt. And I'm perplexed by that, so I wondered if you could address that. I had assumed that it was because we didn't have enough space that we would be sharing classrooms, but as we continue to receive more information, more and more, I'm hearing it presented more, as I say, as an instructional model, which leaves me confused. And it also ties into the issue of, you know, success for every student regardless of race or class because a lot of us have talked about how we're concerned about being able to maintain the tight relationships we have with our students if we're not in our own classrooms. And I think we've spoken to that issue at some of the redesign workshops.
Well, I'll take a stab at it, but I think Director Belial also wants to. My understanding is that there will be some sharing at Marshall and then there will also be sharing here at Franklin some, with the goal of not having any teacher be in more than two classrooms. And the goal of also having a main classroom. And then also teacher workspaces where there are your own place to be, where students could meet you not only in your classroom but at your, in your workspace. The model, you're right, is quite different. I think it's pretty exciting.
Mr. Director, could you explain the model? Because I, we still don't understand, if it's an instructional model, how will it help us close the achievement gap? How will it help us address those at-risk kids we're trying to reach?
Right. If I could finish my first thought, I'm currently working at Oregon State University, so I work with university students. And most of the time, we see our students working more in project areas, less classroom lecture, that kind of thing. And I think that the facilities that we're designing have a lot more of that opportunity for students to do that as well as to work in the classroom with you or in your space. The instructional model, I can't speak to exactly. So I don't know if, I'll go ahead and let, Greg, go ahead and.
So there are a couple of things. When you build a new facility, you're balancing a whole bunch of things. But my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is you've been working with your principal on this issue. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, you need to elaborate on that more, Director Belial?
My understanding is that the principal has had conversations with the teaching staff here at Franklin about the model.
You know, I would have to defer to, I don't have too many colleagues here. I have one. But in terms of the notion of the shared classroom, we really, I would say, as a staff, did not feel that we were aware that that was going to happen until pretty late in the game. So in terms of working with, if you're speaking of Shay James, I assume you are, for example, or Juanita, who's here now, I recall last year that a lot of us were kind of stunned, quite frankly. And we're very concerned about kids not being able to access us in our classrooms and particularly those of us that work with academic priority kids, and the majority of Franklin teachers do, and that will continue to be the case. I think it's that relationship piece that really worries us. Because I don't think the kids that come to seek us out before school, during lunch, after school are necessarily going to come to those teacher workstations. That's what we're concerned about, I think many of us.
And I heard that concern through the Franklin Design Input Session. But again, in my conversations with Juanita and both Shay, my understanding is that they're working with you and the staff to figure that out, as well as John Wilhelmy. Will there be some trade-offs that are made, perhaps? Will it have the intended impact that people are worried about? It's hard to say. But as Director Knowles just pointed out, if our job is to get students post-secondary ready, then our environment should begin to prepare them for that. And so I can't speak more again to the educational model, but I would direct you back, if you're not comfortable with the answer, to talk with your principal and John Wilhelmy, who are working to figure out, how do we make sure that you have the support so that we can support the kids?
So could you possibly just, a little bit of factual information? What percentage of teachers will be sharing space both at the Marshall site and then at the newly redesigned Franklin site when we come back?
Again, those are specifics that, my understanding from the last conversation I had with Juanita, they are mapping out literally whose classrooms, what the scheduling looks like. I don't have that detailed of information. But she should.
I just, I wanted to ask a question about, I've only been involved in the school, I have two kids in school, but I've only been involved for about five years now. And I feel like there's recently maybe been a little bit of a change with the environment of the superintendent's special advisory committees. And I kind of want to get a little more information about, well, I guess, let me tell you my feeling. One of my feelings is that this, in particular, maybe I'm talking about the SACIT committee now, but it sounds like this might be, from listening to some of Carol Smith's dialogue, this might be a model going forward. So I think my question kind of revolves around, I feel like we have a committee. It meets with the superintendent. It seems sort of handpicked, I could be wrong. And it also has liaisons directly to the board. And then this committee does a lot of work with certain constituents in the environment and then creates potential policy that feels like it might be a little bit fast-tracked just because, you know, you guys are involved, or some of you seem involved in this from the beginning and obviously this is being, you know, kind of pushed directly or created directly by the superintendent. And so I'm just wondering, maybe A, is this a model going forward? And B, do you see this model as working the way you'd like? Or do you think this model maybe needs to change in some ways to allow a little more interjection with the community as things move forward in their process?
I'm going to give an answer that my colleagues, some of my colleagues aren't going to appreciate. I actually, you know, I actually believe that SACIT was a really good committee and it did amazing work for us. And I think there's going to be lots of opportunity for public input still. But in general, the board used to operate with its own committees and we did a lot of the work as board committees. And the community could watch us work because they were publicly announced meetings. And we could actually have the opportunity to attend as a quorum because they were publicly announced meetings. And so if you had three board committee members, but you knew what they were working on and you wanted to go, you could attend as well. So the model was flawed a bit because we didn't have a strong school board manager to help us communicate with the other four folks in terms of minutes and kind of keeping the rest of the board. So what would end up happening is often the committee would move along and you'd get to the board and all of a sudden, the superintendent was feeling like she had to explain the whole thing from scratch all over again to the rest of the board. So we had a model that I think generally worked, but we needed to have more support to make it really functional. And instead, we've basically given up on that model altogether and we don't really have much in terms of organized board committees who are driving the work and allowing the public to watch us work. Instead, it's in these other meetings. Now, for the most part, all of the SACIT meetings, as an example though, were open to the public. I think they had two where they decided not to, but all the other meetings were open to the public and were announced and the rest. So, you know, there's different ways of doing the work. I wouldn't say that any of it is particularly fast-tracked. I think in terms of the SACIT work in particular, it's been a long, long, long process to get to the recommendations that are coming forward. And in fact, the superintendent hasn't even taken those recommendations and made a recommendation to us. I mean, we heard them the same time the whole community heard them. So there's lots of different ways the boards organize and do their work. This happens to be the model now. It may not be in the future, I don't know. But I'll let my other colleagues talk about it.
Yeah, I would say, from my viewpoint, is that this, it's not necessarily a, the SACIT process is not necessarily a model that's going to get adopted for all outreach and community input. And that we can always do a better job at that, that historically, we've done a really poor job and that we need to improve all the time. And I'm hopeful with this work with PSU on the boundary issues, that that really will provide a model for really good public input. Is it going to be perfect? No. But will it be better than what we've done in the past? Yes. That's number one. Number two, I think that the issues that have been brought up through SACIT, I think the process has worked relatively well because of this. The issues are not easy and it takes some thorough vetting and consistency to do that. And the folks that were chosen have done a great job and now they've laid the cards on the table. And there's, will be plenty of input, I believe, when the board makes its final decision. So I hope that's helpful.
And I'm supposed to be one of the colleagues who would disagree with Director Regan. But I, what I would say is that whether it's a model, how we organize to do our work is always a challenge. Some people say, we want real community members. And so when we pick real community members, which I think SACIT is, people get frustrated, well, it wasn't the board doing the consideration. Now this all of a sudden pops out of nowhere. When in fact, again, when we, when we asked the superintendent to bring us back proposals, she said, I'm going to charge SACIT, which is a committee, quite honestly, that existed when the board had subcommittees, is my understanding. They're not an either/or, it's just another way to organize the work so the superintendent has some real community input before trying to wrestle with some of these and bring it to the board for our consideration.
I guess I would just say that there are, similar to what Greg said, there are a number of different ways we do our work. SACIT is a superintendent's role, it's not the board. So it's, if the superintendent wants to pull a group of community members together, she certainly can. They can bring us recommendations, the board can consider them, the public can comment on them. And we will have plenty of time for all of that with the SACIT, as well as with other committees that we have. Many of you have been involved in the design advisory groups we've had here around the bond. That's another way we do our work. The board does not generally meet in committees. We have four, I think, now. But we do do our work now as a committee of the whole, which means that all of us receive all the same information and get to hear all of your input at the same time, not just a group of three. So that's really why I think we switched away from the smaller groups. That and the fact that they used to meet at 3:00 in the afternoon and not very many people could come to those. So there are a number of different ways we do our work. If you have suggestions for more ways that we could do it or ways that you think are more effective, we are open to hearing about that.
I think one of the only suggestions I've heard from a lot of people is that if the board is going to be involved in a committee, the committee should be open, completely open. You know, it seems, I don't know, it seems counterintuitive that the board would be involved in something that could be closed. And I know there's lawsuits or whatever that are probably enabling discussion on that too, but that's the one big point I've heard.
So I will point out for all of you that there are two different ways that the board is involved in committees. There are board committees and those are things like audits and charter and there are a couple of others. And then there are just places where a board member will be a liaison and that means that that board member is going to that meeting so that they can come back and inform us. They're not a member of the group, they don't participate in the deliberation, they just are an observer. And that's what SACIT has, a liaison.
Hi, my name is Trevor Bootenhoff. I'm a teacher here at Franklin. Exposure to better teachers is associated with an increased probability of attending university and higher earnings. The current system of teacher compensation rightly places high value on commitment to the organization by rewarding seniority. I was curious if any of you have any bright ideas for how compensation could be complemented to ensure students are exposed to high-quality teachers?
This is one of those things where I have an opinion and I'm open to other opinions. So when I first started on my service as a board and just from my own experience in education, I was actually against performance pay. So you get a test score right and knowing that we only test certain subjects and then so what does the art teacher do or the music teacher? So anyway, so I was against it. And then I had a conversation with a school and I won't identify the school so that somebody can't narrow down the teacher. And she was being held up and very proud of her work. She was like, I love this, it's, it's, she was doing many things right. It was just very clear in talking with her and how her students were engaged. And she was adamantly for pay for performance. So I guess I struggle with this. I think that obviously commitment, we have some teachers that have been here 25, 35, 45 years. That is fantastic. There comes a richness with that. Because as much as education changes, there's a new fad, the basic tenants to good education primarily don't change. And so I, how do we, how do we match it? To me, it's about evaluation and how do we, how do we help people figure out that right match? But even that, there are different opinions. Some, I think of the student, the teachers my daughters had through school and some parents were like, I don't like this teacher, they're not very organized. But the person was so generous in their classroom about letting this go and being supportive to each other. The education was just as fine. And there were other people that, when they had the really strict teacher, the really organized teacher, people were like, oh my gosh, they get so. So it is, it is really public education, right? People bring their gifts and how to best make that match. But I appreciate what you're saying, that great teachers are key to doing it well. And I just want to point out that the last time I saw you, I think was in a Franklin input session, and you were making an adamant plea of how frustrated you were going to be by this new model. And I heard that and I heard how much teachers and students stood up for the kind of teaching that you're doing. So thank you for that.
So yeah, great question. And I think it's one that we, that we have, that we have to do something about. So I appreciate it and as a board, I think we need to, we need to do something about it. We need your input. You asked a question, I suspect you have an answer. And I'd like to, I'd like to hear that, actually, tonight. But there's, there's, one of your colleagues has bantied around the word "teacher-ureal." And so, you know, from my perspective, I think as a board and as a district, we need to put a chunk of money into a pot that allows great teachers to continue and expand to do what they're doing and share that with the rest of the district. So, but I'm curious to know what your thoughts are.
I just think the constant cycle of reflection and adaptation and just redoing things over and over again, constant reflection. and over again, constant reflection. So somehow rewarding that for, I mean, every, every year, you have a different hand of students dealt to you. So, what do you do to always look at the data that you're given with that new group of students and constantly adapting your curriculum and developing culturally relevant curriculum for them? Just always adapting and reflecting on that, using data.
I love that answer. I was going to say that I think that in our last two teacher contract negotiations, we together made two changes that will be really beneficial in making sure that we have the best teachers in front of our kids. And one was in our last teacher contract negotiation, we reduced the number of internal rounds so that we're out in the market earlier hiring teachers. And that allows us to hire more bilingual teachers, more minority teachers, more, you know, really high-level science and math teachers for our, for our high school kids. The districts around us used to absolutely love us because even our student teachers would just get gobbled up by other districts before we were actually out in the market. So I think that was one change that's really going to help us bring in great teachers. But I think also, our, our change in the contract before that was with our teacher evaluation hadn't been changed in decades. And so, that I think is also another way where we can hopefully be working with our principals to evaluate teachers and, and support those who need support. But I would say the most important thing in terms of having really great teachers is also having incredible school leaders. So, it's our principals that are really critical. And I've heard from so many teachers that if you have the right principal, and a principal who can really, really bring the whole team together at the school collectively to support kids, that's the best thing of all. And so, we really have to do a great job of hiring wonderful teachers or, teachers into principal leadership, or in making sure that our principal evaluation process is really, really good as well. I mean, it's a whole team effort to make sure you get the best.
Can I just ask you a follow-up question? You, you said something about, how do you, something about reward. And so, your response to whoever asked your opinion, I didn't quite follow that. Can you go through that again?
So, I responded to his question saying, "Just the constant cycle of inquiry and reflection and adaptation of curriculum and instruction in the classroom." So somehow rewarding that, that continual process of looking at the data week after week, month after month, and then adapting the curriculum and against your, the standards and such.
So, so how would the district reward that work? Is that your question?
I guess that-
So, and then, that's one question to you.
Well, that's, that's injecting my opinion into the response. Why, pardon me?
What are you suggesting is a reward for that?
I don't, that's, that's your, I don't know. I'm just, I have the puzzle pieces in front of me.
We're all thinking about that, right? Yeah. So, one of the other things that I have been reflecting about is, what do we, how, not, not exactly, how do we reward teachers, but what else do we offer? And one of the things that I've been very interested in is teacher mentors. And how do we reward those expert teachers with perhaps having an opportunity other than going into being a principal? Not everybody wants to be a principal. A lot of teachers want to stay in the classroom. They love teaching. And, and so, what do we do for those people who want to stay in the classroom? How do we use those talents better than what we're currently doing? So, that's what I've been thinking about.
Are you ready for another one? Yeah, okay. Rachel Haynes. I'm a second grade teacher at Glencoe Elementary. And I'm sure you know that all across the country, there's a growing sort of pushback against standardized, high-stakes standardized testing, parents, students, teachers. And, so I'm interested in hearing what each one of you, sort of where you stand and where you see the future of high-stakes testing in Portland and the effect it may or may not have on Portland schools and funding and, you know, budget priorities and things like that. I know that as an early elementary teacher, I see more and more emphasis on reading and math, taking away hands-on learning experiences, creativity in the classroom, art, music, you know, I mean, just like the emphasis is, is getting narrower and narrower. And what is considered, uh, successful achievement is pretty standardized and narrow. And we all know that kids learn at a really different rate and take many different avenues to get to, you know, to one place. And, so, and I see a lot of money and resources going towards testing, data collection, you know, the people to analyze, all that. And, and we, when I watched that video, I saw kids talking about wanting to be artists and dancers and, you know, where do we show that we value that when so much emphasis is placed on these very specific tests? And schools are kind of decided, or labeled as successful schools or failing schools based a large part on those tests. So, I would, I would love to hear what each one of you, how you feel about that and where you stand on, on that.
So, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to ask you a question too. So, when you say "high-stakes testing," what does that mean to you?
Um, testing where, like a school can be said that they're failing because kids aren't performing well on this one little snapshot, this one test, when, you know, the example I gave recently in talking about my own class, I have specific maybe things that I want to teach my class on a particular topic or unit. And let's say I have a kid who goes completely in a different direction, but they do research, they're inquisitive, they come up with these problems, they solve, they're, they're totally engaged, but they didn't learn or want to talk about the things that I wanted them to talk about. Can I say that they failed? Can I say that they didn't learn? I mean, you know, I think when I look at learning in a classroom, I look at critical thinking skills. It's not content necessarily. So, I think we place so much emphasis on specific content that we kind of lose this broader picture of what we say we want our students to engage in. And what we expect from them, maybe as adults, to be questioning, curious, critical thinkers, engaged citizens, all these things that you don't, um, you don't show by taking a test. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. So, I think I would differentiate what you're doing in your classroom from the tests. And I, I would say that I, you know, I've just recently had so many opportunities to be in classrooms and see really phenomenal work that teachers are doing. And talking to them about the Common Core, which they are all, at least the ones I've been talking to are very excited about the work that they're doing in the Common Core. And they're, and the students that I've seen and the work that they're doing really blows me away. Just, I mean, my, my kids are in their twenties now and, and the things that I'm seeing the students doing in elementary school are much more advanced than what my kids were doing in the, in the thinking processes and the, that the students are having to go through and doing exactly the kinds of things you were talking about with that student that wasn't following right along line with you. So, I'm seeing a lot of that in the classrooms that I've been in. As far as testing, as far as the big test, the SBACK or other OAKS or those kinds of things, I think we need to, as a district, look to see where we're testing and how much we're testing and what we're testing for. And really do do an evaluation of, of are we over-testing our students and where could we cut back on the testing piece so that we're not spending quite so much time on that?
I just checked my watch, not because I want to leave, but I just want to give everybody a heads up that we have about 10 more minutes, so we probably have time for another question or two. But, I'm going to give you a really short answer, but this question I really could talk on for about three hours. As a former music teacher, standardized tests have never been where I would place my money or place the snapshot. At the same time, I think that they do measure something that is valid for parents to know about how their student compares. I used to take them, it wasn't high stakes, right? We used to take them and then it was just information to have. Labeling a school, labeling a kid, labeling a teacher because of those tests isn't appropriate. It's just not appropriate. I want kids to be the people that are going to pull vault on the moon and are going to be the next artist. And we need to find a way to engage. But I also want to say, we have so many great teachers, some of whom are probably in this room tonight. When I looked at my daughter's teachers again, they were very clear that my job is, for example, to teach reading, but I don't know what these kids are going to come to me with. And so, I have to use what they come to me with to get them to teach reading. And so, so effective. It's different than the sit in straight rows, "We're all going to look at the front board and read sentence A from right, or from left to right." So, it's requiring an entirely different set of skills. But I also just want to note that what I appreciate about your saying the critical thinking, what I've seen when my students, when my daughters come home about how they're doing math, a lot of parents are saying, "Oh, this is so much more complicated than it needs to be." But it's really about that thinking piece. It's, what are the five different ways you could do this? If one of them is quicker for you, then you should choose that. But there are multiple strategies to solve this. It isn't just about five times two. It could be a multiple, multiple of different ways. So, I appreciate what you're saying about critical thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say, yes, I think the pendulum swung too far. And it's all about engagement. And that is a good thing as well for teachers. And Trevor, you just talked about it being the kind of, the baseline to how, how you go about doing it. And, so, I, I actually just think it's, it's a, it's a pendulum swing. We've gone too far and we need to go back the other way.
I would agree that, with that too. And I think the board has demonstrated our concern about standardized testing with some of the resolutions we've done recently and the little mini battles we've had with the state about the smarter balanced assessment. I'd also say that I think what we seem to be moving to now, that we're starting to have a little bit more funding, is to try to give our kids more experiential, hands-on, project-based opportunities, whether that's bringing back outdoor school or enhancing career technical education opportunities at the high schools or middle school sports and music programs. I think that's where we all want to head as a district. And I, I think it's okay for me to say that as, from the board perspective. The other thing I was just going to mention is I've had an opportunity and a couple of occasions to do community service work in other countries, including teaching in a school in Uganda for a couple of weeks. And it's amazing to me how often I get asked in other countries, "How do you teach creativity?" That's the question I usually get. And I have to explain to them, "You don't teach creativity, you allow it to happen." And that's what I think we need to be getting back to.
Okay, so, I, one of my children goes to Pioneer Holiday, which I'm sure you guys are very familiar with. It's a kind of a special needs school. She's autistic. Phenomenal program, has completely turned around education for her. Something, and I guess it's not as much of a question as much as a request to you, is they're not really getting the support that I see that my Franklin students, that their teachers are getting and the Creston teachers are getting. And these people are phenomenal. Honestly, I don't know how they do it. I can barely handle one. But they're just amazing people. And I know it's kind of unique because sometimes it's a school and sometimes it's a program. It's kind of a, an odd situation. But, if you guys could, when you're making these decisions, and I know you've got a lot of stuff on your plate, but if you could keep in mind that that school could really use some extra help, it would be appreciated as a parent there. So, throwing that out there, guys.
Thank you for, thank you for mentioning Pioneer. I had the opportunity with the All Hands Raised Group, the old Portland Schools Foundation, to be a teacher for a day at Pioneer Schools. And so, I went both through their high school program and their K-8 program. And it was incredible to watch the expertise of the teachers and the love and devotion for those kids. It was amazing. But I would agree with you, especially as we go through our budget process. It's a conversation I think we need to be having as a board about our alternative school programs and how do we better support kids.
Hello, my name is Sean. I have two boys over at Creative Science School. And they're getting very different experiences. One is on track across the board. The other one is doing his older brother's homework in math, but in English or reading, he's really struggling. And we've, with him, learned that they're, they have a no-fail policy. They just keep pushing them through. And with this standardized testing, how are they spotting these little puddles of problems? And what can we do about that? Because now, in third grade, he moves beyond any help with the reading program in the school system. So, when he enters fourth grade and is still, will be struggling, where are we?
I mean, I would encourage you to be talking to your principal to see what kind of supports we might be able to wrap around your son. That would be my first advice. Are you in active conversations with your principal and?
Our school just got an entirely new administration. So, we're starting all over again. We're perplexed. We don't know what to do. I mean, my, my kid's been here three years and we're, as parents, we're back to square one with dealing with all new people.
I know, I mean, I know that Creative Science has a really wonderful, hands-on program, and you need to find a program that's going to work for your kid. But I would really encourage you to start talking with your administration and see what kind of supports you could get for your child.
No, other than, you know, the whole state, including our district, has taken on the goal of, of every kid reading by third grade. So, it's not acceptable for that to happen. And, you know, raising that issue is important. And I think we need to go, we are, and, and our superintendent is highly focused on making sure that we reach that goal. And understanding why. We have to understand why that happened.
I recognize that my son does have some issues. And one of them is authority. He can be a manipulator, but at the same time, when the school-
I can relate to him.
When he left second grade and we learned that there's a no-fail policy, we're like, you know, there, he's also not getting any additional help. He's been at that school, he's in his fourth year, started kindergarten. And as much as parents, we try and read every night or when we can, when he lets us. And then, you know, the, the school has a policy of everyone reading by third grade. Well, I'm just wondering, where, where are we going to be when he starts fourth grade?
So, I would also say that this year is the first year where we've ensured that there's some counseling support at every school. So, I would encourage you to be thinking about talking to your school council, see who that is, and then see also whether or not you want to have your child tested in terms of some special ed services or accommodations. So, it might be helpful.
Well, and I think that's a perfect opportunity for PTA to say something that this is a parent advocacy issue. Anytime a child isn't performing to the expectation of the parent, I think it's our opportunity to, and our responsibility to go talk to the teacher, talk to the counselor, talk to the reading specialist, if there's one, and say, "You haven't been identifying my child. Why have you not been identifying my child?" I mean, there's a whole process of advocacy so that, you know-
He's been identified.
So, he's been identified, but they have not given any resources forward. But, that, you know, so, so the issue is, you need to demand those resources for your child. Don't expect the school to provide them. Rah rah, parent power.
As I understand, Creative Science just lost one of those reading specialists. And so, they're dealing with the backlog.
So, I, I just, I'm just encouraging you, you know, to, to not accept that the school will say, "We can't do anything more," you know.
Can I ask you a favor? Would you do me a favor tonight before you leave? Would you talk with our, oh, our board manager, Roseanne, who's there in red? And give your name, give your name so that we can follow up and make sure that the principal is aware and figuring that out. Thank you for sharing. We are at 7:30. Some of us have other commitments, and so, we'll have to be leaving out the door. Some of us will stick around. Again, Roseanne, Powell is here, John Isaacs is also here. We're, some of us will be around if you have additional questions or want to touch base. Thank you all for being here. Make sure that you've signed in because we will send out kind of a follow-up email to this so that you guys can have kind of a running notes of what, what happened and a way to engage. So, I want to thank you all again. Thank you, Director Regan, Director Kurler, Director Knowles, Superintendent Smith. I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
[applause]